All right, so welcome, everyone. We are going to reconvene regular session after having held an in-camera session earlier this evening. So just want to say happy new year to everyone here and in the gallery and to those watching at home as well. We'll get started with any items added to the agenda. Are there any items? I do have one item. I just want to mention the property assessments that have been released. So any other items to add to the agenda? Okay. All right. So if not, then could I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Digdon. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. So the motion has been made. Could I -- is there any further discussion on the agenda? Sorry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So the next item is the review of the December 7th minutes from 2023. Are there any errors or omissions to correct in those minutes? Okay, so hearing none, I'll ask for a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor. Deputy Warden?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Councilor Sampson.
Recording stopped.
Any further discussion on the minutes from December 7th? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. So the next item on the agenda is a presentation on coastal communities, coastal erosion, from Dr. Tim Webster at NSCC. He seems to be having some difficulty getting connected, so we'll skip over that item for now and come back to it if he is able to connect, if that's okay, Shelley? Okay. All right, so the next item on the agenda, then, cruising right along, is the review of the Warden's Council report. And again, I need to apologize for getting that in the package late. It struck me yesterday that I hadn't done that, so I got it done. Any questions on the council report?
It's not in there.
It's not in there? Oh, okay. All right. I thought I had sent it.
You did, yes.
Okay.
Is it okay if I vote if everyone can see?
Yep, that's fine. And maybe I can just discuss a couple of highlights. Like, it turned out to be a little bit of a longer period of time because we are a little late getting to our meetings. But it basically goes on to speak about the Marine Renewables Canada Conference, which happened right at the very beginning of December, as well as, sorry, a few additional meetings. So you'll see some references to SEPI in there. SEPI meetings are Accessibility Advisory Committee meetings, meetings related to a couple of interviews that have been conducted. So I guess maybe just one item of note is there was a great deal of interest from the media following our release of the Offshore Wind Centre of Excellence's request for proposals through the municipality. So that generated some media interviews from places like CBC, Cape Breton Post, and the Inverness Oran. So, yeah, so lots of interest in that. Any questions on those items? Just trying to see if there's nothing too unusual in there. Generally, very similar to previous reports. Okay, so if there's no questions on that, and Shelley, if you can pop it in the package and then folks could review it anyways, that would be great. So the next item is the Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health update. And I just wanted to provide this really quickly because we did have a meeting of several folks from CBSRH with the new folks involved in the Cape Breton Medical Campus that is being developed in Sydney. It's pretty exciting stuff, I have to say. They talked about this new centre really having a rural focus, which of course appealed greatly to the folks in the room. We met at the Dr. Kingston Memorial Health Centre last week. So just to give you a quick overview, they have received almost $60 million in investment from the Nova Scotia Government. They're, you know, $49 million for the creation of a health sciences centre at the former, well, at the current NSCC campus, Marconi Campus, which they will take over. A little over $6 million for the creation of a 10,000-patient collaborative clinic, and $3.7 million for expansion of health and counselling centres. So it's a pretty exciting project. They're considering it a regional campus with Dalhousie Medical School curriculum, and it's really focused on addressing the need for primary care in rural areas. And they are expecting an opening of August 2025 with 30 students. I think another interesting note that I wanted to mention here is that CBU is hiring a housing consultant to address some housing challenges, you know, around the post-secondary situation that's happening in CBRM, but also in general, and with a focus, again, on rural areas. So it was a really informative conversation. I want to thank Dr. Orl and the folks from the Cape Breton Medical Campus who made the time to bring a team down to meet with us and talk about their priorities. I think what the footprint looks like here in Richmond County and in other places that are a little further away still remains to be seen, but there certainly is a focus on rural, and they seem to be interested in working with us, so. Any questions on that item? Okay, the next item on the agenda is an Engage Nova Scotia Quality of Life Survey Support. So after chatting with our CAO, Troy, about this, just wanted to add this to the agenda as sort of an information piece. Engage Nova Scotia, a number of years back, did a, I think it's to date Nova Scotia's largest survey related to quality of life, and came back with really, you know, interesting results that I think municipalities have the opportunity to build on. They're at a point where they are ready to do another iteration of that survey, and they're looking for an investment of approximately, I believe it was $0.50 per citizen, from municipalities to put towards the project that would help with covering the costs related to survey development, deployment, marketing around it, and then, you know, and then analysis at the end. So my suggestion, I guess, I wanted to include the information in the package for council to deliberate upon, but my suggestion is that we would defer this to budget. And I think, you know, Troy, that's something you and I had talked about. But in the meantime, I wanted to ask council if you have any questions on this.
I remember seeing the presentation on this very thing at the Spring Conference, and it, yeah, it did seem to have a lot of informative data, and a lot of it wasn't really specific to here, where we were lumped in with Inverness County and everything. But it's still, there was a lot of good information there on people's, sort of, where the advantages and disadvantages were, or where people felt things were falling short, so, yeah.
Thanks, Councilor Sampson. Yeah, you're exactly right, and I think things like trying to measure how people feel about their -- Sorry, if they're feeling socially isolated, that's, those are, you know, definitely things that a survey of this type could reveal. So could I get consensus from council not to defer a sign of the budget? I did check in with Deanna Graham, who's the -- He's the lead with Engage Nova Scotia, and he suggested that, you know, many municipalities are looking at deferring it to budget or even doing like a one- or two-year commitment. Sorry, did anybody have any questions on that?
Yeah, for me, just to allude to what Councilor Sampson said about us being tied in with, you know, Inverness. So when I look at the survey, it's like 13,000 people took that survey, or 80,000, so that's like 16 and 1/4% of the population took that survey, right? I'd be interested to see, and in the Strait area, in Western Cape Breton, there was 512 people. So I'd be interested to see what, how close to that percentage we are, you know, like, what's the population of the Strait, Western Cape Breton, you know, that compares to the 512 that took that survey? Like, are we below the average? Are we above the average? Like, you know, is there a way to find that out, or like?
Doing a rough calculation, I believe we are below that average. So we would have some work to do, I think, in this next iteration to get our percentage up. Yeah.
And I assume there's no breakdown of Richmond County versus Inverness County or anything like that?
No, to my knowledge, there isn't, that they would have available publicly. And so what happens there is when sample sizes get to a certain smallness, they can't report the data specifically for smaller regions because it becomes a bit of a confidentiality issue, where you could potentially be starting to identify respondents based on, you know, the responses that they give. So there are certain, like, ethics board commitments that they would have to meet to avoid that kind of thing, right? So, okay, thank you, Deputy Warden. All right, any other questions on Engage Nova Scotia? Okay, so moving on, I'll defer to Councilor Brent Sampson, who has a couple of items added to the agenda. Low income tax exemption, over to you, Councilor Sampson.
Thank you. So what I put here for the background information, many counties throughout Nova Scotia offer some property tax exemptions for residents who are below a specified income threshold. Although the province does offer relief for low-income seniors, the hope is we could maybe develop a policy to enhance that, as well as include residents who maybe don't qualify under that as seniors. So included information from some other Nova Scotia municipalities that have programs such as this offered, I believe in there there was CBRM, Victoria, Annapolis, Aniganish, Pictou, and Geisborough. And I'm sure if I had kept searching beyond, there are some more available. But some of these are applications, some of these are the policies. I just thought it was good background information for people to look through. They vary on the income threshold, I think anywhere from maybe mid-to-high 20s to $35,000. There was one, I think, was $27,500. There was one up to about $35,000, and offering a different amount of financial support. So basically, my ask was here was if we could request staff to investigate the cost of such a program here with a few options on income levels and relief levels, that way it would give us a bit of options, maybe come budget time. I figured if we started at that, or staff was given that notice now, it may give us some options at budget time to see about whether or not we could implement something like this.
Thanks, Councilor Sampson. I think your agenda item is extremely timely, considering that the assessments have come out in the last week or so. Maybe I would ask the CAO to respond if you would like to add some comment.
Sure, not a problem. I've seen this used in other municipalities, and we can come back with options, with thresholds on the limit and the relief for you guys to consider, based on our numbers and our tax rule, so that you guys can see how that gets, how that would affect us.
Yeah. Great, thank you, Troy. So I think, based on the CAO's response, maybe we could have a motion to ask staff to investigate the cost of such a program at multiple income levels and relief levels, and refer the information collected to budget discussions.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on the low-income tax exemption?
Madam Warden? Yeah, so just, and I don't know that it's for discussion, but maybe just for CAO's purpose, part of the meeting that myself and Brent attended, that this information come about was from Sean Andrews of Geisborough. So maybe just reach out to him, he'll give you a, and I believe the number he had come up with was the low-income exemption that they use is under $35,000. So again, just...
Thanks, Councilor Digdon.
Yeah, so the Geisborough example, because I was kind of working on this prior to that, so I didn't know they had it, but the Geisborough example is in the package, Councilor Digdon, if you want to check that.
Okay, thanks, folks. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda, again, over to you, Councilor Brent Sampson, regarding the Coastal Riders Trail Access.
Thank you, Warden. So the background information here, since the capping of the former Lordways Dump Site has been completed, the Coastal ATV Group would like to request permission to cross along the outer band of the property, so they can access the trail system that's already in place. I've included the email from the group with a map showing where they'd like permission to use, which is not crossing over the dump site itself, but rather along the outer edge. And if they were to have permission granted, it would allow the club to seek funding in order to fence off the area along that trail, so as to avoid people from crossing the newly capped site. The outcome requested would be a letter of authority, provide it to the club, so they can apply for funds to fence off ones out of the trail, in order to both maintain trail access, as well as protect the investment the county has made. Concern is here, you know, there's multiple accesses to the site at the moment, and if we leave it as it is, it'll probably get used by people, let's say, outside of the club, you know? And thinking this might be proactive for us to look at a way to protect the investment for the county, but not only that, allow access to connect the trails and in keeping with our trail strategy. The big thing is, for the club, they wouldn't be able to apply to advance or anything like that for funding unless they had permission from the county.
Thanks, Counselor. Any questions for Councilor Sampson on this item or discussion? Okay.
I don't have any questions for Councilor Sampson, but I guess I would just ask the Director of Public Works, like, if he has any thoughts, if you've seen the disposal or...
We saw, we have had prior discussions. As Councilor Sampson mentioned, the concern would be for the newly capped disposal area. Operationally, that would be my concern. I can't speak to liability or other legal issues. That's probably something we would have to look into and report back to council, but certainly the capped area can't have traffic on it because that cap is meant to keep water from infiltrating into the former disposal area and creating leachate.
Thank you, Chris. And I guess, like, in general, my question would be, how would we, you know, once a location is capped, whether it's there, you know what I mean? Like, I'm thinking of, there's West Arashad as well, right? Like, how do you keep the traffic off of it to make sure that, you know what I mean?
You don't.
You don't.
That's right.
I mean, so maybe if we created particular paths, you know, or particular trails, then it might help to kind of mitigate that in a way that, anyway, it's just my thought, you know, I don't know.
And if I may, Madam Chair, if we align the trail with the group, we may find efficiencies in leaving a tree buffer, where you don't have to incur the cost of fencing as much. So if we can work with what's there, if there is, I think some of this area needs to be cut new. I think there's some trail in the area, but some needs to be cut. And if we can maintain a tree buffer, then that would eliminate some of the cost of fencing as well.
There wouldn't be anything need to be cut with this proposal along the outer edge in particular, kind of thing. And that's what they were hoping might be the easiest strategy. And part of the thing is, like I said before, if they were able to access funding, let's say from advance, that might end up saving the county a ton of money by them accessing the funding and being able to fence it.
I read it.
So you can look at the map if you want, you see along the outer edge, yeah.
Are we required to fence in areas once they've been capped, in general?
I defer to Chris, but I don't believe that we are.
Okay.
We aren't fencing in the area, but we are putting a gate on the driveway to prevent access. So in a manner of speaking, we do restrict access. And on the former sites, we do have barricades where there are ATV, where there were ATV trails traversing the site. But as was mentioned, it's generally people will find a way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All we do is try to barricade areas that look like they're being used in areas where people shouldn't be traveling.
Okay. Great, okay. So at this stage of the game, I mean, I can definitely see some benefit to this. I think we're kind of all in agreement on that. I am wondering, though, at this point, if, you know, if we are to support an application, to do a letter of authority to support an application for funding, you know, do we need to give staff some more time to work with the group, I guess is what I'm asking, to make sure that, you know, that the route that they've established or that they're suggesting is the optimal one?
Madam Chair, I'd ask for that, just to refer back to us for now, to work with the group and hammer out those details. Allow us to reach out to legal as well, just to make sure we're good on that front, and work with the group to try and find a solution and bring it back to you.
Okay. Timeline-wise, is there a deadline for application on this funding stream from the group? Do you know, Brent, or Shane, or Marie, or is there a deadline on it?
The whole funding has just been finished off right now.
Okay.
So we have to wait till, like, summer.
Okay, so we've got some time that we can work with, okay. So it sounds like we've got some time that we can work with the group to make that work, so. Okay, so, pardon me, did you have a question? Okay.
I just, I, for whatever reason, I thought some of those fundings were merged, but...
But if they're used up before the end of business school...
Yeah, yeah, sometimes you can defer them, they'll let you, yeah. But regardless, we should try to be speedy about it, I think, so that we can get it in motion. Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or a motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on the Coastal Riders ATV Trail Access? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Thank you, folks, for providing a little context there. Much appreciated, and thank you, Councilor Sampson. All right, so the next item on the agenda is, under the CAO, we have the Admin Operations Report. Were there any questions for Troy on this report? I made a list and left it home. That's pretty much how I've been rolling lately, but, well, I can catch up with you. I think one of the, one of the things were related to the emergency management and fire services, the VFD insurance renewal discussion. It says that it's completed. Could, do we have, could you give us some context on what we've completed there? Is it...
I may defer to Jason on this, but if I'm not mistaken, we had to do, we had to go around with one of the insurance agents that is covering our volunteer fire departments, is that not right? And Steve took him around to the different sites, and I don't know the extent, what was, was it the sites, the equipment, or verifying the numbers of the members? I can't remember.
I think just every year...
Oh, Jason, you pressed your button.
It wouldn't.
I think every year, I do. It's a process. I'm sorry.
So first of all, I want to thank you, Troy, for your thorough note to provide the context for this discussion. We are looking at an election on October 19th, 2024, so mark that in your calendar. We do, as a council, need to make some decisions prior to the election, related to voting method, the appointment of a returning officer, the advanced polling days, enumeration or use of lists or permanent register, and then tariff fees and expenses. So I think we will attack this one piece at a time, if that's okay with you. All right. So first item is on the voting method. We do have, you know, several options ahead of us. I believe the last election was paper ballot only. There are also options for hybrid, both electronic and paper ballots, and then electric only. So those are our three options ahead of us, and I'd open that for discussion from council to see if you have an opinion on whether or not we should be doing paper, hybrid, or electronic only.
I think we've maintained, for the most part, a very high voter turnout, and the paper one seemed to work fine. I think I'd be more tempted to leave that as is.
Thanks, Councilor Sampson.
I would lean in the same direction. Like, if we had a low voter turnout and we could attribute it to, like, accessibility or whatever, I may think differently, but I do like the idea of paper ballots as well.
Yep, same here. I'd go down the road with paper, paper voting only, yep. And like Councilor Melanie said, when it comes to accessibility, there's always proxy votes, where you can get some proxy votes signed off and whatever, right? So, yeah, I'd stick with the paper situation, yep. Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Councilor Digdon?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I guess the only question I would have is, is there a major cost to looking at both or giving somebody the option of both? That would be probably something we could...
Thanks, Councilor Digdon. I guess that's my question as well, is we have had a relatively strong voter turnout, so that's, I think, good for Richmond County, and hopefully we'll continue that. But is there, do you know, at this point, CAO, if there's much expense to adding the electronic?
There is, and we've asked, but they can't really nail down a number for us. I wanted to say it was based on the residents as well, but they held off on giving us a number. Both the clerk and I asked to put, we just said, "Put us in the ballpark, tell us what we're looking at," just to give it a trial on hybrid, and it was between $5,000 and $10,000.
$5,000 and $10,000?
Yes. Sorry.
So between $5,000 and $10,000 to do hybrid, yeah. Counselor?
Yeah, I've been involved with other organizations that have switched completely to electronic voting, and, you know, probably 46,000 people eligible to vote, the cost is somewhere around $30,000 or $35,000, so I suspect that's probably a good number. Excuse me.
Yeah, I'd be concerned with not knowing the number, like, that's a big range. I mean, my feeling is that if we could add an electronic option, I think I would agree with council, we definitely want to stick with the paper ballots. We have, you know, a certain demographic here in our communities that I think appreciate having an opportunity to vote in person and on a paper ballot. However, I do know that there are sometimes students who are, who live here, but who are away during, you know, October 19th is probably a day of the week kind of thing, right? So they're often not able to get home to vote, and I certainly heard some feedback about that. Actually, October 19th is a Saturday, there you go.
The municipal elections are always a Saturday, generally, but the advance polls are weekdays.
Right, right. Funny how I quickly forgot that after just three and a half years, but anyway. But anyways, I had heard some feedback around students, like, so youth voters, kind of looking, wanting to pursue that. Is there a way we could get a more definite number, you know, before we would make a decision on this? I mean, it just seems a little odd to me that a company would not be able to quote you, you know?
A person.
Yeah.
Yeah, give us that.
Well, and I think the way the pricing typically goes is, it's not about the number of people who vote, it's about the number of people who can potentially vote, so it would be based on your population. But I agree, I am struggling to understand why you couldn't get a price, because we get, like, again, in that board, we approve the price because it's a quote that we get. The other thing I would be a bit concerned about, about the idea of having, like, one foot in both ways, is like how that looks on the voting day, because you'd need to make sure that people are not double-voting, like, there's a whole bunch of other parts that could, and again, I know that these things happen, but I know that in that organization, we did do a hybrid vote the first year we were switching over, and it was very complicated. It ended up being a very administrative task, and that's why we then switched exclusively to electronic, right? So we were like, we gotta do one or the other. In that situation, they had a very low turnout with the paper ballots and a much better turnout electronically. Again, I don't know that that's what would happen here. And of course, like, I think we need to stick with hybrid for sure, because not everybody has good service, not everybody has a cellphone, like, all of the parts, we need to make it accessible. And I do hear you with students, but, you know, to Councilor Sampson's point, we do have the proxies that can be done, and that paperwork is available long in advance, and so usually you can make that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, I agree, I think it's ridiculous that we can't get a good price on that, but...
Well, I feel like we're being asked to make a decision without the full information, right?
So we do need to make a decision on this, though, by March, what is it, March 15th? Or is that just on the appointment of the returning officer?
That's the appointment of the.
Okay, so, I mean, I guess at this point, I'm wondering if council would like to make a motion that, you know, that we refer the, I don't know.
Method?
Yeah, or the method back to, back to staff, or, or do you want to just, you know, proceed with, with the paper ballots? You know, if we, if we did do hybrid or electronic voting, like, we would have to have an alternative voting bylaw, right? So that's, that's another piece that would have to be referred back to policy and bylaw. So lots of work to do in a short period of time on that.
Yeah, I think it sounded like the majority were okay with paper ballots, and there is other, like Councilor Sampson said, or Deputy Warden Sampson said, through proxy votes and so on and that. I think there is, there is possibilities available for people if they want to vote, and especially considering our turnout's been relatively high. I think we don't want to overcomplicate this.
Also, a great point, Councilor Sampson. I am wondering, then, if we could put a little bit more emphasis, and I know this will come up in our Accessibility Committee, about proxy voting, to help people get their proxies together in advance if they have accessibility issues, or if they know they're going to be away from the municipality. Maybe that's something we could, we could make the decision on paper ballots this evening, but then also maybe ask staff to kind of work on a way to get that information more proactively out, because I know, I know it is out there, but a lot of folks, it just kind of passes them by. So just to make sure that we're kind of covering the bases from an accessibility perspective. Okay, so at this point, then, I'd entertain a motion to proceed with paper ballot only for the October 19th municipal election. Does somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Councilor Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Madam Warden, I, I just think, I understand that the paper voting is fine. I just, it'd be nice to look into the, to the hybrid. I mean, you got to understand, we, we do have the, the seniors, but I think if you actually look at the numbers, we have a lot of young people that don't show up, but are voters, and I think we're missing, we're missing them at the polls, and honestly, the new, the new age is electronic, so I think it would be worth our while to at least take a look, or a little dive into the system. Maybe it's not as complicated as we think at this day and age. That's just, it wouldn't hurt to take the look.
Yep, so if we could press maybe for a quote, and then at least we would have that, you know, hopefully before our January 29th, I think it is, meeting, and then if, if the results of the quote change our minds, then we can adjust the motion at that time from committee of the whole. So if we could ask you to follow back up with that company and see what, what's up. And I don't know if there's more than one type of company that would provide that service, but.
There were two.
There were two, okay.
He was at the.
Yeah.
Sorry, he was, he was in Halifax at the conference.
Yeah.
They were set up, yep.
Okay, all right, so the, so the motion stands, but kind of with the understanding that we'll, we will get a price on the electronic. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Sorry, I'm just making some notes here. All right, so the next item is the appointment of the returning officer. So we have a couple of options here. The CAO has outlined that this is a requirement for us under the MGA. We do need to have this done by March 15th, and we can either appoint the municipal clerk at this point, appoint another municipal employee, appoint another person who is not a municipal employee, or delegate council's powers of appointment to the CAO. I believe the person who was the returning officer was not a member of municipal staff last year, so should we resolve to delegate our powers of appointment to the CAO, a motion would be required. I'm assuming a motion would be required for the other three as well. My, my inclination is that we would perhaps defer that to, to the CAO, but I'd like to hear from counselors if you have another opinion on that.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to fight you for the, the light. So the, within this question, there's the other one as well, whether you want to select the returning officer or I select the returning officer. So that's the delegation of that power, right? So if, if it's you guys, I have to get it back in time for council and advertising and all that stuff, otherwise, if you delegate it to me, I'll be going through the applications and just simply coming back with a report, just so that's clear. Okay?
Thanks, Troy. Councilor Melanie, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, again, I'm not entirely sure how this has been done in the past. I guess that's the joys of being the first time through this. My inclination would be to advertise for the position and that, and for council to make the choice of the returning officer. That would just be my inclination versus delegating the powers.
Okay, Councilor Sampson?
Yeah, I was thinking similar. I think unless the CAO feels that there is a municipal employee who has time to do it, but I'm suspecting that's quite a big project, and the answer's probably no. But regardless, I, the only thing I would say opposite to Councilor Sampson, I'd be fine with the CAO deciding on who that is, like any other position that's hired here, for the most part. It's not us making that decision, other than the CAO themselves.
Thanks, Councilor Sampson. Deputy Warden, or can you?
Yeah, no, I would tend to agree with Councilman Brent Sampson. For me, I would delegate that to our CAO and put our trust in him and have him look at the applications and go from there, and, yep. That's, that's a direction I would take. Thank you.
Yeah, I would be super impressed if the CAO could fix the, the polling of, that happened four years ago with names that were no longer currently on the voting list, but again, that's not something he can do, so, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it either way then.
So maybe before we kind of make a decision on that, Troy, is that something you're comfortable with? Is us kind of doing that delegation to you, or would you prefer that it come back to council? I mean.
I'm fine either way.
Okay.
Honestly. I, I have heard from some staff that, you know, everybody's interested in elections, but they just don't have time to take on the role of returning officer.
It's a big job.
It is a very big job.
Yeah.
If you would like me to select them from a list, by all means, I'd be honored to do that on your behalf, but it's up to you. If you want to main, keep that at your table, I totally agree with that, too. Yep.
Okay, so I think we probably have a majority that is looking to delegate the powers of appointment to the CAO, so we would need a motion to that effect. Before we make that motion, I, just to clarify, the, the position would still be advertised publicly, correct? Yeah, okay. Okay, so I'd look for a motion to that effect, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Councilman Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or on the delegation of the CAO?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Diggan. Any further discussion?
Just a question. So the CAO will prepare, advertise, and select the person, and it will never come back to the table, other than to advise us over who it is? Is that what we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is carried. All right, the next item on the agenda is the advance poll dates. So Troy has set out a, I guess, a, a summary outlining that Tuesday, the fourth day before the ordinary polling day, would be an advance poll, and then we can fix one other day by resolution. It should either be Thursday, the ninth day before ordinary polling, polling day, or Saturday, the seventh day before ordinary polling day, and I wish I could remember what we did last year, but I absolutely can't, so. I feel like it might have been a Saturday.
Saturday before.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, yeah, so we can, we could make a motion to set that, that other fixed day by resolution if council agrees. We just need to pick whether it should be the Thursday or the Saturday. Any comments on this? All right.
It's a long weekend, that weekend. So I'm just throwing that out there, which might make the Thursday more attractive than the Saturday. I don't, I, I would, initially, my response would be Saturday, because I like it to be, I like people to have that opportu, like, there's one weekday, which is the Tuesday, and then the Saturday, and then the Saturday of the, of the official day. The only concern I have is that it, it is a long weekend, but.
The, the long weekend is the advance poll Saturday, would it be? Yeah. In some ways, I think, student-wise, that might be more accessible, right? Like, there might be more people from away that are home at that point, yeah.
I'm thinking with the new hybrid system, that it's not going to matter where they're at on the long weekend.
Yeah, so going back to Councilman Brent, I think if the long weekend, yeah, you might have more students home on, on the long weekend, right? So I would, I would go with the Saturday, the 12th, you know, if we're going to try to capture as many young people as we can.
Okay, thanks, folks, for that discussion. So I guess I'd be looking for a motion to, a motion to fix the advanced polling day for Saturday, the seventh day before ordinary polling day.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Councilman Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or please? Thank you, Councilor Melanie Sampson. I lost my light, that's never. All right, any further discussion on that?
Yeah, so Madam Warden, we're having two, correct?
Yes.
Two, yeah. So, yeah, the Tuesday, the, the 15th, yeah.
Yes, exactly. Okay. Next item, I think, are we finished with that one? Sorry, what's that? Oh, sorry, yes. All those in favor, please say aye. That motion is carried. Thanks to Deputy Warden, keeping me on my toes. All right, the next item on the agenda, then, is the enumeration or use of lists or permanent register. And I know this is going to be a fun one to discuss, because certainly in the last, you know, list of voters that we received in, you know, in the last election, there were some issues with it, but we do have some options ahead of us in order to move forward. So, Councilman Brent Sampson, you had a question?
Yeah, so I, like, what happened last time, I think we were using the 2017 provincial election list, so I guess our most up-to-date would be 2021 now, right? If I think, or was there a, the federal one, I think, was the fall, so I don't know if that would, but I think we could get a 2021. We're still going to have probably several issues, just the sense that there's been a lot of new residents. However, I don't know that we want to incur the cost of an enumeration at this point.
Are we able to do hybrid? Like, are we able, able to use the list, let's say, that came from the provincial election, but have someone go through just to see if there's anything obvious that needs to be rem, anybody obvious that needs to be removed?
I'm not, I'm not sure, like, is, are there any restrictions, like, legally, that would prevent us from doing so? As, I mean, the provincial and federal elections happened about a month apart, they were from There's, there has certainly been quite a bit of change, because the pandemic was still underway, people were still moving in and, and certainly lost some folks as well, sadly, but, you know, I'm not sure if we would be able, or if that would be maybe the job of a returning officer, that we could delegate that task. Troy, do you know?
Yeah, when it comes to the list, I'd be talking to the arrow.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Through the keeper, on, on our behalf, so.
Does, does 4C, so 4C says, use any permanent register of electors established and maintained for use in a federal or provincial. Does that mean, like, when people select that they're okay with being on the registry for voters, like, when they file their income tax? So that would be probably the most current of all lists, right? So I think, A was, we'd figure out our own list, B would be, we would use the most, like, one from an election, like, one that had been used, but then the third seems to me to be the list that would be generated from that data, which would or should be the most current.
If that's the case, that would be information from, you know, this past year, right? And that would be absolutely the most up-to-date. So perhaps we could, at this point, make a motion to ask staff to pursue option C if it is more recent than option B, and if not, we'll pursue option B, to use the most recent provincial election, or provincial or federal election list. Is that okay with folks?
And could we just add to the motion, and to also investigate whether or not the complete list needs to be used in its, in its form, or could it be reviewed for accuracy, for lack of a better word?
Okay, so the motion is to ask staff to use a permanent register of electors based on, you know, the most recent, between whether or might it, not, it might be related, you know, from an, an income tax filing, versus using the last list of electors prepared in the most recent federal or provincial election. And further to, you know, to, sorry, to your point, Councilor Melanie Sampson, further to find out if we are able to edit such a list through the effort of the returning officer. Folks, okay with that motion? Okay. Could I ask someone to make that motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second or?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Diggan. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is regarding the tariff of fees and expenses. So this is the last part of the elections document. So essentially, we have an option ahead of us to ask, to have staff to present, to draft and present a tariff of fees and expenses for review and approval at a future meeting, or we can delegate our authority to make, revise, and amend the tariff of fees and expenses to the CAO. And this would be any expenses to be paid to any person for services under the Act related to the election, I'm assuming. So, I don't know, Troy, would you, is there any additional context you can provide on this one? It's, I'm not, like, I'm struggling to think of examples of what these might be and what the scope of, you know, of them have, have been in the past.
Yeah, I'm gonna probably call on Jason, our CFO, on this, just how often this gets changed. It, it seems like it's a rather static number and poll.
Jason, if you're going to speak, Chris, you can put your mic on for Jason.
Okay.
Just to give us a little more of the historical.
Yeah, I could use that one. Yeah, so it's basically just, from what I recall, it's a two-page schedule, and some of the things that would be in there would be, like, payments to the polling clerks. If there was an enumeration done, there would be so much paid to the enumerators per name on the list. There's an allotment for the returning officer to purchase office supplies and paper and those things like that for the, for the election. So, to my knowledge, the, the fee or the schedule had not been updated or increased for some time, but in the last election, there was a factor applied. I, I don't remember how much it was at the time, but it was very low overall, I thought. So I had given some, some numbers to the municipal clerk, but in the last election, for example, we had budgeted $50,000, and we had, it was just over $50,000 and a couple of hundred dollars, the total. The prior year was around $46,000, so I would have to think that the difference between the two of a couple of thousand was likely because of the increase in fees on the schedule, because, to my knowledge, we've been budgeting $50,000 for quite some time per election, total cost. Okay?
Thanks, Jason. So any comments on this from council? Do we want to delegate this to the CAO, or do we want to have staff present, draft and present the, the schedule of tariff, the tariff of fees and expenses? And maybe one other question I have is, in our current budget, I believe we did budget $50,000, is what I understood for the election. Okay. Councilor Melanie Sampson?
So just that I understand, it sounded to me, from the CFO, that this schedule is a provincial schedule that we adopt, or is it a schedule we've had here at the county? Our own, our own in-house, okay. He shook his head, so no need to push your buttons, but, yeah. Okay, so it's something that we've had here, and we've just put, like, a economic adjustment or something to up the amounts over the years. Yeah, so for me. Yeah, so for me, I like that approach, of course, because it's, it's pretty systematic and seems to be fair. And as long as it's an approach, I don't, you know, to, we're delegating our authority to the CAO. I guess he could do whatever he wants, but I'm assuming that that's the approach that he would take and then I, that would be fine with that.
Yeah, and I would agree with that. I think we could delegate that to the CAO if, if he's okay with that. And it would be, it would be next year's budget this all falls under anyway, right? So if we felt we had to increase it by a little bit, just to cover that, you know, we should be fine, yeah.
Okay, so it sounds like we are going to be making a motion to delegate this work to the CAO. All right, so the motion would be that, oh, sorry. Councilor Diggden, okay. So the next, so sorry, the, the motion would be that municipal council delegate to the CAO its authority under section 139, 1A of the Municipal Elections Act to make, revise, and amend the tariff of fees and expenses and provide for a method of rendering and verifying accounts for payment relating to the 2024 municipal election. Could I have him?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Diggden. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on that item?
If I may just one comment, Madam Chair, it was your municipal clerk that put the effort into this report. She dove into this one and she put all those options out there and laid it out for you folks tonight, so.
Well, thank you, Shelley. It's extremely clear. And when I read it, I thought, wow, this is, this is the roadmap to the next election. Thank you very much for putting that together for us. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, so the next item on the list is the community acknowledgements. And first one, of course, we always kick off with our volunteer of the month award. And for December 2023, it was Aaron Marchand, who is the chief of the Lewesdale and District Fire Department. Aaron consistently demonstrates unwavering dedication to both the department and his community. He's been an integral part of the department since joining at a young age, consistently giving his utmost effort. Aaron is ready to spring into action in any situation and actively works to enhance the department through member training, ensuring sufficient equipment, and boosting morale. Beyond the primary focus on community safety and his role as chief, Aaron eagerly participates in various events throughout the county, always finding ways to incorporate the fire department and extend a helping hand. His involvement also extends to the Lewesdale Ladies Auxiliary, where he plays a role in ensuring seamless coordination between both the fire department and the auxiliary. He's an active member of the Berishaaw Trails Association, dedicating his time to maintaining the multipurpose trail in and around Lewesdale, and certainly plays a vital role in ensuring the continued well-being of the community through this essential recreational resource. So, please join us in recognizing Aaron for his hard work, dedication, and commitment to his community. We do thank you, Aaron, for all you do for Richmond County. And I'm not sure, Councilor Melanie Sampson, if you'd like to chime in on that? But it was a great, I have to say, a great nomination, very well-written, so.
I will just offer a few comments, like, for those people who know Aaron, know that, you know, he's, he's a younger person in the community and, and often younger people, particularly ones like Aaron, who have busy work schedules and young families, don't often find the time to do all the things that he does. And it is really admirable, and I think it speaks a lot to the future of volunteerism in the area, for sure. And I'd be remiss if I didn't comment, both of my, two of my three sons are on the fire department with Aaron, and he's a really wonderful role model to young people in the area as well.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. Any further discussion on that? Questions for, okay. Are there any other community acknowledgements?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Morton. For me, again, I'd like to acknowledge again the, the people down at Lundergan Lane Lightup. That display, for anybody that hasn't seen it, that display is incredible. And the amount of work that goes in, into, into that, at the street and down that lane is, is incredible. This year, they donated their funds to the Angel Fund Group. And they work very closely with the Angel Fund. There was nights where there was pizza being given out, there was hot chocolate being given out, and cookies and treats. So they, they worked together to make, to make that a huge success this year. And I think right now it stands at very close to $80,000 that was raised for the Angel Fund. So I've seen that on Facebook a couple of nights ago. So just, just want to applaud and acknowledge and congratulate all those people and job well done.
Great, thanks Deputy Warden. Yeah, I know it was a great, it was a great display that they put together, for sure, so. Any other community acknowledgements? All right, so hearing that, I'm going to move us on to correspondence. So the next item on the agenda is, we have a couple of items that require some action. The first one is a grant request from Raising the Villages Cooperative Limited for the type four regional health general grant funds in the amount of $5,000. So the application has been put together for us. And I guess they're looking for an investment of $5,000. And I know earlier today, we received an update from Jason, the CFO, to, you know, on the, on the status of our grant funds. So it is getting pretty, pretty low, but just wanted to open this one for discussion. But just for folks' information, we do have a little over $8,000 left in our regional grant fund, if I'm reading that correctly. So I would, I guess, open this one for discussion regarding the Raising the Villages request. Councilor's agreeing with the $5,000 request? Or, or are you suggesting an adjustment, or?
Yeah, I just noticed throughout it was a $3,000. It seemed like they were looking for them from Inverness County. And I know it was less for the town, would probably have different financial implications there. But I just wondered, for the amount of it, that's, it seems to have gone to Inverness County so far. But I know they are trying to plan more things for Richmond. But I guess it's a chicken and egg issue.
Well said, it is a chicken and egg issue, for sure. But yeah, it certainly looked from their application like Inverness was putting $3,000 towards the, the initiative. And, or would folks be comfortable with that amount versus the $5,000? Or, and I guess coming all out of the regional, we do have February and March left for that fund to cover.
Yeah, I would definitely not be interested in ascertaining the full $5,000 request. Like, like every other request, I think I would be comfortable or fairly comfortable with the $2,500, half of that. Again, it's kind of like the chicken and egg combo.
Thanks, Councilor Diggden. So we have a suggestion of $2,500 towards Raising, the Raising the Villages application. Would folks be supportive of that? Yeah? And fully from the regional fund? Okay, so could I have a motion to award $2,500 to Raising the Villages for the grant application of the type four regional health general, coming, being allocated fully from the regional fund?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Diggden. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on that item? Hey, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is from, again, CFO Jason Martel regarding the guarantee for the Village of St. Peters. So these, I think we've seen come in from time to time. They seem a bit of a, bit of a formality, but we are required to provide that guarantee because that's the nature of the relationship between the village as a municipality and the county as a municipality. So we'd be looking for a motion that we approve a loan guarantee in the amount of not more than $185,000 for the purpose of the village to conduct lift station upgrades and WWTP electrical upgrades.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Thanks, folks. So the next item on the agenda is the piece of correspondence from our Director of Community Development and Recreation regarding the Eastern County's Regional Library request for additional rent. And this is related to the Pitta de Grau location. And of course, is related to some of the damage that was incurred and the repair that's being planned post Hurricane Fiona. We're still talking about Hurricane Fiona. It was a devastating storm, certainly, but has, it will require the library to move locations. And so they're looking for the rent coverage to be covered for a bit of two-month period, I believe, while they conduct those renovations. So I guess at this point, open for discussion. But if folks don't have concerns, then I would look for a motion to approve the allocation of those funds. But do folks need some discussion time on this first? All right, so the motion would be to approve the allocation of funds to support rental fees for the relocation of the ECRL Pitta de Grau Library for a period of up to two months, during which time the renovations take place in February 2024.
I'll make that motion.
Deputy Warden, any second here on that?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Councilor Diggden. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question, just a question in terms of budget where we could see that. Are we okay to, do we have a little spot for that somewhere, Jason?
It's a great question. It's a pretty nominal amount, I believe.
It is a pretty nominal amount.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm assuming it'll just come out of the library budget. I don't want to put Shannon on the spot and defer to, defer to her necessarily unless she wants to speak. But again, it's only $1,000, so I'm not concerned about the amount.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is for information only. We have a report from the Cape Breton Regional Enterprise Network. It's an information and activity report, and I believe these are going to come to us on a quarterly basis. And thank you, Martin, he's here in the gallery with us this evening for providing that. It's an extremely thorough report and covers not just the activities that Martin has been involved in, but also the wider kind of suite of activities and services that we are able to tap into because of our support for the Cape Breton Partnership through the Cape Breton Regional Enterprise Network. So any questions on the report? Quiet group, everybody liked what they saw. Trust me, if they didn't, they'd be less quiet, I believe. So thank you, Martin. It's, it really is a great report, well-formatted, and we really appreciate receiving it. It's nice to have your, have the pulse of what's going on, right? So, thank you very much. Okay, the next item is the review of checks issued. My mic's off, sorry. Sorry, so there were no questions regarding the review of checks. And review of action items is what we're on now. So any questions on this? Maybe just comment that we did regroup in policy and bylaw to talk about the action item from June and regarding the housing best practices. So we're, we're trying to cook on, you know, get that going a little bit more aggressively. So thank you, Troy, for, for looking into that for us. And we'll hope to have a report right back to council shortly. Next item on the agenda is the items added, and I believe there was one item added. So it was regarding the, the property assessments that were issued by the, by Property Valuation Services. I know many people got those in the mail this week. And I wanted to add it to the agenda because I've been getting reports back from constituents that assessments have gone up small amounts, but then some of them have gone up extremely large amounts. I've seen a report of almost $70,000 in an increase in an assessment, and another one today of a $100,000 increase in an assessment. So that is a very troubling statistic. And it's, you know, and it's a troubling cost for homeowners to bear. So I guess I just wanted to provide some background information for members of the public and, and watching and, and members of the gallery here. First of all, you know, municipalities, we don't set property values. We set the tax rate. And, and we haven't changed that rate since our last budget. But the property assessment, of course, impacts how much you're going to pay on a yearly basis. The, the property value is set by Property Valuation Services Corporation. They provide the assessment services and information for all of Nova Scotia's municipalities and property owners in accordance with the Nova Scotia Assessment Act. And every year, they issue assessments based on a variety of factors. And this year seems to have really hit some people really, really hard. So I just wanted to make sure that we had, we were publicly acknowledging that, but also providing some information that property owners can view detailed information on their assessment by accessing their, my property report on the PVSC website. They, you use your assessment number and a PIN to access your information, and you can get a PIN number by calling them. To get that PIN number or to appeal your assessment, which I would highly recommend that you do if you've seen that larger jump, or any kind of jump that you feel is inappropriate in your assessment, please do appeal it. You can contact their assessors. They're available to answer questions by phone at 1-800-380-7775. Or you can email them at inquiry@pvsc.ca. And I guess at this point, I'm hoping that maybe we could share this information through our social media channels, Troy, if that's, and thank you. Because I think there are some folks who have been hit particularly hard by this, and we need to keep that in mind and, and do what we can to help. Does anybody have any questions or additional comments on that item?
Yeah, I don't know why you added it to the agenda because it was, yeah, it's not, this ain't Madam Morton. I've been swamped with calls. One thing I will, I guess, we don't set the Property Valuation Service, the, we don't set the assessment, but we do set the tax rate. So again, you know, I know we're looking at low-income seniors, and we've had that discussion earlier that we're having our CEO look into. But it might be also something we can look into. Because the tax rate, the increase in the PVSC is obviously going to increase our tax base. So again, we do have the power to potentially adjust our tax rate to work back with the people. You know? I guess ultimately, what I'm saying is, we potentially have, have the power to reduce the tax rate if required.
Well, we wouldn't do that in the current fiscal.
No.
We would consider that a budget.
Right.
Yeah. So just certainly something for us to consider at budget time, and yeah, for sure. Thank you, Councilor Diggden. Yeah. Okay. Any questions about that? All right, so I'll, I'm sure you have this information, but I'll pop it over to you and we can make sure to get it out through our social media channels. So at this point, yes, sorry, go ahead.
Madam Morton, some of the questions, and I don't know if we can get a criteria from them, how they actually go about the, the property valuation. And, and again, you know, some houses that are, you know, half a million dollar homes are getting, or million dollar homes are getting assessed at little to nothing. And then other homes that I personally know sitting on sonotubes without a foundation shot up $80,000. So I don't know.
So I, I think the best we can do, like, in terms of immediate action, is we need to encourage people to appeal their assessment if they feel it's unfair. I think, you know, maybe there's some broader investigation we can do. But I know that there's, there is an, only a certain amount of time that you have to appeal the assessment. So I, I'd really like us to focus our efforts there, if that's possible. But, you know, in the meantime, maybe we could check in with PVSC to find a little bit more information about how that's being calculated. Sorry, go ahead, Troy.
If I may, Madam Chair, and through you to the council, the PVSC has mentioned that they will come and do presentations numerous times. Our, our local reps here in Cape Breton will, will come. And we could look at our committee, the whole schedules for the rest of the winter and spring, and see if that's something that could help. But like you said, we'll, we'll do the social media and, and our website for now. But having them come in at a future committee, the whole meeting, may not be a bad thing just to remind people why things are the way they are within the act and how they adjudicate things.
Thanks, Troy. Yes, go ahead, Melanie.
Yes, so, and also the PVSC's website actually is fairly informative. It does have a fair bit of information. It's got data in terms of, like, how, where they gather their data to do the assessments. It talks about how they classify properties, the methods that they use, and the testing methods that they use. And I know I've had conversations with them previously for certain things, like you were talking about, Councilor Diggden. Like, that, what feels like a bit of an inequity, for lack of a better word. But again, there's only, they can't review every assessment. They just put things up by percentages. But then, given this data, it will hit a certain catchment area, from what I understand. but then, given this data, it will hit a certain catchment area, from what I understand. So I do think, I know from having discussions with them, I learned a fair bit in terms of why things change the way they change, and so I do feel like having someone to come here to do a presentation would be so valuable. And I do think, you know, if we're going to put on the website, like, on our socia's to direct people to the assessment appeals section of their website, obviously, we could say something in terms of, like, understanding your assessment. They also, again, to the Warden's point, if you go in online and you put your PIN in, it will actually tell you what they have as data on your property, and so it'll, you know, that's how they're basing some of their calculations, and so if something is incorrect, that's, that is a perfect reason why, so it says you have, and again, I, I haven't looked at my own recently, but I think it will come down to saying, you know, like, well, you have two finished washrooms, or like, whatever the square footage of your house is, and if it, that's not right, then that's part of the reason why your assessment is too high, and that is an easy appeal. So I just, again, would strongly encourage people, I think it's always when these assessments come back and they're so large, people really start. And I guess to that point, I would also say I was speaking with somebody who is, who is, who represented, represents an organization that is exempt from taxes, and they just made a comment that they had gotten a notice from a PVSC on their, it was at the church, right, for the graveyard, and then I think I had found something online, and I just didn't have a chance to do more research on it, that there are more assessments coming out in the properties, but again, some of them would be covered under the, the rules that exempt the religious organizations, so just, there may be some people listening online who are with NPOs or things like that, and they may be concerned, because they may have gotten documents this year that didn't look right to them. And again, I think it brings us back to the point, I hate to kind of take up too much space in this discussion, but the discussion that we've had at budget many times about the grants in lieu for taxes that we are giving, and how some of these assessments are getting quite large, but organizations are not trying to appeal them because they're, they're free, you know what I mean? And they're, as I tried to explain to the organization that mentioned to me, oh my God, the assessment went up to this, but it's okay because we don't pay tax, and my comment is, it, it's not really okay, because if it's four hundred and eighty-five thousand, remember, the taxpayers of the county are granting you the money to cover those taxes. And there, it, it does create inequity between some organizations, so again, I, I feel like as assessments continue to rise, the conversation about taxes in lieu needs to be had again, I think, in, in terms of, you know, yeah.
Okay, thanks, Councilor Melanie Sampson. So maybe from that, are you looking to refer the, like, bylaw 56, I think it is, back to policy and bylaw for review? Committee, okay. So maybe we could pop that onto our list in terms of an action item? Or actually, maybe we'll put that in a motion so that it gets captured as an action item, sorry, God, right? So could I have a motion to refer bylaw 56 to bylaw and policy?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Councilor Diggden. Any further discussion? It might be an opportunity for us to request from all of the folks who are listed in that bylaw to provide us with their latest assessments so that we can also have, you know? Yeah. Okay, perfect, so all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Thank you, folks. All right, so that brings us to our question period, this is a fifteen-minute question period, it's not restricted to items on the agenda. If there are folks in the gallery, gallery who would like to approach or to ask a question, you can just approach the table here and press the little red button on the microphone and ask your question. If there are folks online who would like to call us, you can call 1-902-226-9885. That's 1-902-226-9885, and we'll open this for a maximum of fifteen minutes, but we'll close it if there are no questions. So we'll just give that a minute, because there is a light, slight delay. All right, so I'm not hearing any questions come in, so I believe we'll close the question period, and I will adjourn the meeting, there being no further business to discuss, so thanks a lot, everyone, and we'll see you next time. Okay?